Hello, I'm Jeremy Spencer with All on Georgia News in Camden County. I'm here with Ms. Elaine Karowski, who is the councilwoman on St. Mary's City Council Post Two.
Correct.
And she is seeking reelection for Post Two in St. Mary's. And thank you for coming. I do appreciate you coming. You're actually the first incumbent I've interviewed for St. Mary's.
Oh.
So I appreciate you coming. And I'd like for you to tell us a little bit about yourself and what your campaign platform is.
Okay. Personally, I've lived here 20 years now. In January, it'll be 20, which seems unbelievable to me. I bought property in St. Mary's in 93 with the plans of moving here when I was able to retire, and then actually started living here in January 99. I actually did what I do a lot, and that is I did a lot of research into where I wanted to move. I knew I wanted to move to the south where the temperatures were nicer. And St. Mary's was actually one on my list of many, and it was the first place I visited. And I didn't look around too much longer after that. I just fell in love with the small-town environment and all that small towns offer that are not available. I grew up in a very large Midwest city, so I always felt that a small town was where I'd like to live for a while. And I've lived here now 20 years and love every minute and don't regret anything. Four years ago, I decided to run for city council, and I was successful and was elected. And I gave it a lot of thought this time about whether I should run again. With things I usually do, I looked at the advantages and the disadvantages to running. And I just felt that I had put so much time into the development of the master plan for St. Mary's through the last four years that I wanted to be able to also see it start to be implemented. So that was a major stimulation for me to run again, as well as the part of being a city council member that I enjoy the most is the interface with the community. Going out, talking to folks, seeing what they think about, what their concerns are, what they like about St. Mary's, what they'd like to see different, and I enjoy that part of my job.
Okay. Let's go into some of your platform and some of your priorities that you would like to move forward with. You mentioned about implementing the master plan as something that you would like to do once you're reelected, because we're kind of in the early stages of trying to do that in St. Mary's. So what's your main platform about and what are your priorities going into the new election term?
Well, one of the big issues, and it's something that touches almost on everything across the board, and that's economic development. When I was doing a lot of the interviews for the master plan, so many individuals said that they really would like to see a different kind of jobs coming into the community, ones where someone can actually support a family on. We have a lot of minimum wage and lower-level jobs that families struggle to survive even with two working, and trying to get a higher level of skilled working jobs where folks can actually go in, hopefully get promoted through time and advance in their jobs. So trying to attract businesses now is a tough business. Everyone's trying to attract business. So you have to create... The city can't create jobs per se, but they can create an environment where individuals and businesses will want to come into the city and do... and expand there and grow there and offer jobs there. We have a lot of positives. We have a wonderful school system, which is a great positive for the community. We have a lot of folks who are retiring from the military who would like to stay here, who bring a lot of skills. So now we just need to get that mix. We have a technical college coming. So it's all about trying to create environments and attract businesses to us, because there's so much competition to get that business. And we don't necessarily have the dollars to offer them, so we have to advertise about the quality of our community and what the city... how the city is willing to work with new businesses coming in, as well as our current businesses, to allow them opportunities to expand. So economic development is definitely important to me, and I think one of the things we've done right is JDA, the Joint Development Authority. That really works for all of us, because what's good for Woodbine, what's good for Kingsland, and what's good for St. Mary's is good for everyone.
Okay.
Because no one's confined to the city limits in order to get a job. And all of them are within easy driving distance. So I think having that unified voice has made a major difference in our ability to attract businesses coming into the area.
And that's one of our topics, and I'll move into that a little later. But if you wanted to expand any more of your platform, it's fine. We'll go into that in a little bit.
The only other thing I'd like to mention is that another reason I decided to run is I believe that in the functioning of the council that I add value. I tend to be a strong team player, but I also tend to be an independent thinker. All of us bring with us our backgrounds and our experiences. And I tend to look at things from just a little bit different angle. I don't know if it's because of my management background or if it's because of my health professional background. But sometimes having different views and different viewpoints on topics is positive. You end up with a better result by having a variety of opinions. And I think I always bring a little different twist to things that maybe someone else hasn't thought of. And it... Not that it has to be that my way is the best way, but sometimes you can find a better way when you look at all those different ideas. So in a way, I feel I add value. I add value in that I believe everyone has the right to be listened to and that everyone's opinions need to be respected. Even if they differ from my own, they need to be respected, and you learn from listening to them.
Okay. Well, let's go into some of these topics. We can kind of squish two of them together. The infrastructure drainage and Irma recovery and hurricane preparedness that the city is trying to deal with at the moment. We had some really unfortunate luck in the last two years with Matthew and Hurricane Irma. So far, right now, it's going into October. We haven't dealt with a tropical storm issue yet. Knock on wood, we don't get to do that.
Right.
But what is your... You're the current incumbent, so, you know, give us some insight that you have seen that we're doing well in our recovery with Irma, how we're preparing, and what we need to improve on moving forward.
Well, I'll start from when I was coming on council last time. Although it wasn't a major part of my platform, the lack of preparedness for natural disasters was, as a healthcare professional and as a former emergency room nurse, was very unsettling to me. I felt that not only the city and the county were not well-prepared, but neither were the citizens. And at some point in time, they had caught the emergency managed position for the county and made it a dual role with the fire chief, which added to my concern, because I did not believe that one person running a fire department in as large as the county could possibly spend any time on emergency preparedness. So we really just sort of winged our way through Hurricane Matthew. We did a pretty good job of it in spite of not being as well-prepared. But I think it was very fortunate when they brought Chuck Voight on with his level of expertise. And he wasn't here, I don't think even two months before we actually started having to deal with a possible storm with Hurricane Irma. And he added another layer of cooperation and speaking with one voice and getting the message out. It was significantly better from the first hurricane. Not as good as where we need to be. Part of the problem, and I'll take a little sidebar here, and I want to thank All on Georgia and All on Camden for offering this other source of communication, because we really are in a media vacuum here. We're so close to Jacksonville, but we're across the state line. They tend to totally forget about us. We're too far away from another major station for anyone to pay attention to us. So if it isn't for other sources of information, such as what you're doing, we're really very much in a communication vacuum. We don't have as many ways of reaching out and daily speaking to the community. So I think we showed a lot of improvement. I know that we've expanded the emergency management department, and we're working on future improvements and a better countywide plan. And actually, I think that probably Hurricane Matthew was a good lesson for us and helped us do Irma a little bit better. But we always have to look for more ways to improve. Part of the problem with Hurricane Irma and why it was so slow and we're still recovering is because so much of the waterfront was damaged. And with that comes all kinds of layers of bureaucracies and licensing and permitting that you have to go through before you do the work. And if you don't do it right, you're just creating major fiascos or financial problems for yourself in the future. FEMA has lots of rules and regulations. You have to make sure every T is crossed and every I is dotted.
That's what I think a lot of citizens don't understand. They don't understand... All they see is that the bow ramp's not being fixed. All they see is that we're just continuing with project after project, but we're not maintaining. You brought up something about bureaucratic layers. What have you experienced in this recovery process that's frustrating for you so that you can get, you know, the city back where you want it?
It's all frustrating.
It's all frustrating. But what is your most frustrating point about it, being an incumbent sitting on the council?
It's that there are citizens that are used to having services that are not available to them and that are creating hardships for the citizens. The boaters are suffering right now. The one dock that was open, I mean, there's lineups on weekends to try to get the boats in the water. Parking isn't as good down there as it could be. The current's very rough down there. I'm not personally a boater, but I've heard from enough boaters that you have to know what you're doing when you're navigating the Wheeler Street Dock. You have to know, and it's going to be so nice to see that ramp open again. We have all the parking spots in the world for them on the waterfront, which I've heard is a real positive from other cities, that we have so many nice, long parking spots for the boaters to park in. But right now, there's not a ramp for them to use. So I'll be glad to get that back.
And when is that expected to be completed?
I think they're hoping by spring or late spring, possibly. The demolition part of it has gone well, so they'll be getting ready to do the reconstruction.
Okay. Let's kind of duck into some drainage. Y'all have some drainage projects that y'all are putting together. What is currently being done at the moment? And what is the city planning for, for the future, to improve drainage structure?
Well, I did a tour recently with Bobby Maher, who is the Public Works Director, and because I was trying... Several of us were trying to get a better understanding of some of the drainage problems. And we know there's drainage problems, and there's some communities that have... Every time it rains hard, they have standing water. It's... A lot of our communities and our different areas were developed quite a while ago, maybe in the 80s even. And at that time, the standards for drainage were a lot less stringent than they are now. And because of that, you have systems that are not the most adequate to handle rainfall as you would like them to be. And that's the slanted roads where the water runs down the middle of the road into the drainage ditches and into the marsh eventually. And because a lot of the driveway have culverts...
Culverts, yeah.
And because over time, the culverts tend to flatten down and get closed off, that it becomes an issue of not only the city having to keep up their part, but the residents also needing to keep up their portion, which is the driveway. Because this neighbor might have a perfectly sound drainage ditch and culvert in their yard, but if the next one's blocked, the water isn't going to go anyplace. So it's a more complex issue in some areas because of the designs that were implemented at the time the subdivision was developed. So you're dealing with design problems in addition to the normal drainage problems. So you have to find a way to be able to approach it logically, definitely. And I think you've probably heard me say in the past, we have not brought up our staffing. We were very quick to cut back in the recession, but we haven't progressively started to rebuild our staffing. And I think the Public Works Department is the one that has taken the biggest hit because of this.
You and your colleagues on council have had a lot of back and forth about whether we should hire our own public works employees versus contractors. You've made it very clear that you're for hiring those individuals as city employees to continually maintain those. What is your... Can you go into detail of why you think that is the most effective approach versus contracting out services?
Contract... I see contracting as short-term needs.
Okay.
And I see hiring and... Because it does more than one thing. One, you want your employees to have job satisfaction, and you want them to be able to be able to progress into new areas. If you can't make your employees happy in their job, since we can't pay the salaries of neighboring communities, we're going to lose them. So part of retaining the employees you have is making sure that they have opportunities for advancement and opportunities to learn new skills, because it's enrichment. It's job enrichment. It makes them more marketable, but it makes them more valuable to you as a city also. So my problem is when we know we have to deal with drainage issues 365 days a year, contractors does not seem reasonable. For one, we may not be allowing our own residents to have jobs with benefits. And for all we know, we're not letting those contractors have jobs with benefits either. We don't know. We don't have any control of how the employees are treated either. So I just feel when you have something that has to be done every day, you're better off hiring people that you can train, that'll stay with you for a while, that you can give some job satisfaction, and you can move them along and possibly promote them into better jobs in the future.
One of the things that y'all are doing as a city, y'all are putting in that connects to the drainage, is these liners that go into... I believe it's focused in the downtown area. Is that right?
Right now, it is.
Okay. And that's for those terracotta pipes that need... You know, I've spoken to Mr. Holman about this, you know? And as a citizen, I'm skeptical of that use of... To repair the infrastructure. Why not just repair it with something that's going to last a very... Forty years is a long time for the liners, but why not repair it with something else? Is this something we just have to do immediately as a temporary thing and then progress it to something long-term? Is that what we're trying to do?
And that's very possible. I... Drainage is going to be a continuous issue for the whole life of the city. And I think that's one of the reasons that we're seriously looking into a Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Because with the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, you have dedicated funds. You have... You know those funds will be used just for this. And the other thing that I like about the Stormwater Enterprise Fund is that everyone contributes, regardless of whether you're a nonprofit or not. And it's based on how much non-permeable surface you have. So a store that has huge parking lots, lots of payments are going to contribute much more than someone who has a home with a gravel driveway and, you know, permeable surfaces, which is a more fair way to do it. And I know that nonprofits and churches and everything work on a shoestring, but most families work on a shoestring too.
Okay. Well, you answered some good questions about the drainage and hurricane preparedness and stuff. So let's move on. And you've hit on economic development. Let's... I want to go back to that.
Okay.
What are some projects you think are going to be viable for the city of St. Mary's moving forward with economic development that's currently happening right now?
Well, I personally feel the Marine Center, the wharf at St. Mary's, could be a very good overall economic development step. Because what it'll help to do is attract voters to our area who do not already come here on a regular basis, possibly. Especially when it comes to the boat repair facility. It also may very well attract boaters from Florida who know they have to get their boats out of the waters of Florida during hurricane season, because they have no insurance and don't give them a place to store their boats if they wish to. So I'm seeing it as a possible drive of new income and new resources into the community, as well as the fact that if you have visitors coming into the community, my understanding is they're hoping to have golf carts there, that folks can jump on a golf cart, drive downtown, go to the waterfront, visit some of the stores, the restaurants, and just stimulate overall the economy.
One of the areas in that project, they have to do some dredging in that area. What's your opinion on that? Because there's been a lot of, eh, I don't like that. Eh, well, it's kind of needed. So what is your opinion on that?
Well, for one, I was very pleased to see that the DNR agrees.
Okay.
And the DNR has been very supportive and has given very good advice through the process to make sure that the dredging, the way the water flows, will keep the dredging needed at a minimum. But we know it's going to have to be dredged, and they have... The DNR has a saving spot that I think will hold... I may be wrong. I think it's like 20 years' worth of dredging so that it can be easily maintained. The other problem is the water flow. I think that's the North River. It's very... The current is very strong there. To maneuver boats without it being in a protected area is very hard for the average boater, especially if you have a larger boat. So it's creating a little safe harbor for the boaters too when they use that river as access to be able to manipulate their boats without dangers of running into another boat or a dock and doing damage. So it does create a nice, safe area. Asphyxiously, it'll be extremely pleasing to the eye. And hopefully, it'll attract commercial property and residential property to it eventually.
How confident are you that that's going to happen here in St. Mary's?
I'm confident that the developer is a sound developer. He's done other developments that look extremely nice, and he's been successful. He came in skeptical, and I think he's comfortable. He knows it's going to be work to get the funding and everything. But I like his degree, his balance between his skepticism and his optimism. He feels it can be done. I don't think he would have taken it if he did not feel it could be done. And with all the various tax incentives we've put in place on the property, it helps with the infrastructure and getting the development going.
Okay. What's... Are there... What are the current projects that are going on right now? You think will enhance the economic opportunities in St. Mary's besides the wharf project? What are some other ones that are... That come to your mind that you think is going to be a viable aspect in economic development?
I'm hoping that the changes made on St. Mary's Street will help. It will definitely help some of the normal drainage problems.
And you're talking about the shrimp project?
Yes. It'll help some of the normal drainage problems. It creates... It's going to create an atmosphere where you can have the natural flow of the waters through soil rather than in the sewer system to have cleaner water going into the rivers. The nice thing I see about the shrimp project is if the city had to pay 100% of that, we could not have ever in the near future done that. However, there's so many grants right now that are interested in improving areas that are subject to flooding and improving the quality of the water being returned to the rivers that we were able to match the funds and make our... The funds the city was willing to put in place twice as valuable. I am not a believer in grant chasing. In fact, I'm a strong... In strong opposition to chasing grants for the sake of grants. But if you can find grants that fit into your needs, then I think you're unwise not to go after them.
You said something that was very poignant. You said you're not a grant chaser. It, you know, it seems that we have been doing that in the last several years, or chasing grants, chasing grants. And this project, the shrimp project you highlighted, is a potential project of that. Do you think that... Do you think that this project is going to be... Be able to be completed without all of these grants? Is it that we have to continue chasing these grants?
No, no. What we have in place now, yes, it can be completed. We have the funding we need to complete that now. So the funding's in place. The grant money is in place, so...
So we won't have to continue chasing more grants to make sure that...
Not for that project.
For that project.
Should we stop not... No. I don't think a city can ever stop looking for grants, because it double... It can... It definitely increases the money that you have available. If you have, you know, $100,000 and you can turn it into $175,000 to do something that you need done, then that's $75,000 that's not coming from the taxpayers. There's almost always matching funds now. It used to be grants. You could go after grants, and they just pay the whole thing. That's...
Right, right.
You have to match. You have to match frequently, and you're willing to supply manpower to the project. But often, they also want you to match dollar by dollar. Some projects and some grants are a no-brainer, because you already have the project in place. And I'll use Orange Hall as an example. We're in the process of doing some major construction repairs on Orange Hall. We know it's going to cost money. An opportunity for a $10,000 grant from the state came up. Why not apply? It's not a huge amount, but why not at least try to get a little bit more? It might take care of electrical problems.
Well, I'd like to go into Orange Hall a little bit later, so remind you to get that. But let's... One more aspect of the current projects that are in place, the shrimp projects splash pad. From my understanding, that's been... That discussion's been turned into a grassy area?
Right now, that... Right now, that area is going to be a grassy area.
Is there going to be a splash pad, or is that just going to... We're going to wait and see?
We will wait and see. There is... This is one of the areas where we don't all agree on council. I am not a proponent of splash pads, especially not there.
Why?
Because I don't think that that's the best use of that property. I just don't... And it's right down by the water. I mean...
Do you see drainage issues with that?
Well...
River quality issues?
Supposedly not, but I'm not convinced.
Okay.
I'm not convinced.
Well, you're not the only one that feels that.
I'm not convinced. I'm not... I'm not sure that any of the areas along the waterfront are the best place to put a splash pad. Maybe Midtown would be a better place to put a splash pad. You're not going to get any grant monies for splash pads. I can guarantee you that. And that's why it is on hold.
You bring up a good point, because the city of Brunswick is having issues with that same issue with their conference hotel park area with splash pads. So they're having some similar issues.
And there's no grant money coming in for splash pads. That's a... To my... In my mind, based on the way I look at economics, that's a luxury. And right now, I don't feel we're in a position as a city to be looking at luxury items. Now, not everyone... I mean, I may have 25 families going boo hoo hoo out there, but that's just the way I feel. It's a luxury.
Well, you have such great insight to what's happening already in the city and where things need to go. So that's a good point that you bring up. Let's move into some other areas, such as the Intercoastal Gateway Project that eight years later, we still don't have a developer for that project. It's become like a lot of heartburn for the citizens. You know, eight years ago, when the city bought that, of course, you weren't on council when that happened. And then they... You've helped recently expand that with the purchase of $285,000 property. You know, is... Are we ever going to get anything built there? And if so, what would it... I mean, we know it's going to be a conference and hotel centers of some sort, but what is really going to happen with that property? Because a lot of citizens are still thinking that that's just not a viable project. Because a lot of citizens are still thinking that that's just not a viable project. What do you think about that?
I, I think that we're positioning ourselves a little better by increasing the size. And I wasn't one to make the decision, but I believe that maintaining the boundary along the waterfront. For the citizens was a very good move. But it also decreased the value of the property that remained. I think Councilman Nutter explained it very well the night we voted in that. We're trying to make that piece of property which we shrink by giving a certain dedicated portion to the citizens. To become less valuable, we're trying to add to the size of it through this. Whether, I think there is a need for something to go there, whether it's in hotel rooms or restaurants. Some amenities that are usable and may attract additional visitors to the city. I do know that through the master planning process, there was a lot of discussion raised by citizens. That the reason the visitors to Cumberland don't stay downtown. Is because we're not offering them the kind of accommodations that folks going to Cumberland would want. A lot of them are families or younger people. They may not want to pack up water and food and bedding and towels, et cetera, and spend the night. But they very met well, may want to go back there more than one day. So having accommodations that would be close to the waterfront, that are reasonably affordable. That allows them to get off the boat and, and stay and eat and bathe and refresh and sleep in a bed. And head back out there the next day probably has some value. I think that has to be the right price range.
Well, that's a good question too, you talk about the price range. You know, I've spoken with several people who are in the development business and I've asked them point blank. I said, if you were a developer, would you buy that property with the amount of public easement that's on it? And they said, no. So, and it's clear that the city's not going to back off on giving that away, that public easement away, or, or would they?
I would hope not, I would hope not because in the long run, over time, if you can leave some public areas for the citizens, I think you're better off.
Why not just make it a part, why not just make it another part? Because it's clear the city is having, is struggling to market that property. Well, not necessarily market it, but to find a developer.
Well, if, if it continues, then we don't, I think, but I think we still have to try a little harder. Try adding this piece of property and see if it, it does. Also, with the Marina coming in. It could create more of an interest and a need because now you have two areas attracting.
You're talking about the Wharf?
The Wharf. You have two areas attracting more visitors rather than just one. And just like you'd like clusters of certain types of businesses. Clusters of available visitor attractions is a good thing, not a bad thing.
Well, I know that the, the, the Intercoastal Gateway Committee have, I think they secured a grant, is that right? For the big grant, or am I wrong about that? For the possible, some boat slips down by the end of that property.
Oh, I don't know if we have that yet. We're applying.
Well, there was, there's a concern that it might compete with Lang's Marina. And that's been a, that's been a, a lot of discussion on social media about that. About how that, that could impact private businesses down there. And I have personally interviewed David Lang and he said he doesn't have a problem competing with, you know, private businesses. But he has a problem competing with the deep pockets of, of the city, the tax, you know, for, excuse me, St. Mary's. But, you know, that, that's his concern, you know, is, is that the intent of this project?
No, and I'm comfortable with it because for us to put in the first number, we had to justify doing that. And even when all our docks were in place, when the research was done, it was justified putting in those. Going back to today, we're not meeting any of the needs of our boaters. No one's meeting the needs of our boaters. They have a tremendous void. It's going to take everyone, including the park service, time to rebuild. I, I see this as an opportunity to attract boaters who have not come here before. Giving them short-term parking, you know, stop by, give us a look. No commitment, stay an hour, two hours, three hours. Because it's all short-term and because it's phased in, for the DNR to approve the next set of docks. We have to show that these are being used enough to justify more. Which I really feel is a good portion, a good thing about the permit. It's only for a limited number and only if those are being used sufficiently. Will you be allowed to go on to the next number?
Okay, I'd like to go into fees and taxes and then I'd like to go into the authorities.
Okay.
And if time, some other topics, but basically taxes and fees. You've been on council for four years and, you know, there, there is, there is a discussion out in the community that St. Mary's is kind of difficult in starting a business. Where have you seen that as difficult, as, as someone that's been on council four years? Where do you see that that, that's a difficulty for the city and where, where do you think that can be improved?
Some of the current difficulties are coming from the fact that our ordinances are thirty years old. And they've been patched and patched and patched. And I know that there's a lot of concern with the ordinance, but there's so much good in that ordinance. That will make life easier in a lot of ways and only a handful of sticky wickets. So I, I don't like seeing the signs, throw them all out, say no to the ordinances. No, let's fix them because there is a lot of good in there. And there are a lot of things businesses want to do that they can't do under these ordinances. But they'll give them more flexibility under the new ordinances. Also, when it comes to fees. Fees should reflect the cost of what the city, what it takes the city to accomplish whatever, the license or whatever. If we use technology wisely, if we can streamline the processes, if we can move more online. Our fees won't have to be as high because you're using less person power to accomplish the same thing.
What do you think it's going to take to do that? I mean.
I, I, the department's already working towards that. It'll be, you know, trying to develop more online. It's getting the right software, getting it working right, getting folks used to using it. And making it as user-friendly as possible. And I'm sure there's systems out there, I'm not familiar with a lot of them. But it's incorporating it into our current technology and getting folks comfortable with it. But I think more and more individuals and businesses are used to doing things online. And it does save in costs and if the cost goes down, the fees can go down. And then when it's online, they can do it twenty-four seven. They don't have to wait for an office to be open. So I know that the planning department's trying to move that way. And it just takes a little time, but that's where we need to be in the next couple of years, is working towards more online services.
And going into the part of the fees is also taxes. Recently, the, the council voted to increase taxes by almost a mil. And it, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but that brings in additional, almost additional six hundred thousand dollars, you know, in revenue. Versus the year before, which was like three percent of, you know, the increase in revenue. So, you know, of course, you voted for that and many of the citizens are like, oh, why can't we just maintain what we have instead of increasing taxes? What, what was the biggest reason why you voted to increase the taxes?
Because I thought it was the logical thing and the wise thing to do. Because believe me, running, it'd be easier for me to have said no. But, and I had to convince myself that I was felt strongly enough to say yes on that. But being my background with healthcare and having spoken to so many citizens. The radio system to me is an essential. We have kids in schools that we need to make sure we protect. The larger buildings and we need to protect our staff. You can't have firemen going into a burning building and not being able to talk to the folks out there. There, there were so many safety-related issues, even with the Public Works portion of it. That to me, I'd be foolish for saying no. And I, I had to weigh the fact that I know I have constituents that financially it'll hurt. And that's the truth of the matter, when you raise taxes, it's going to hurt somebody.
Would y'all, I said in the announcement it was a temporary, that's what it says, a temporary tax increase in the, in the press release. So is this something y'all are going to reevaluate the next year and maybe reduce the mil again or?
If I'm on council, I will definitely consider that because we're at a stage where we're hoping the property values continue to increase. Which with the property values increasing, it means the income, of course, starts to build itself up. I think it's something we should always consider.
Okay, let's go into authorities, community boards and make sure you plug in Orange Hall here.
Yes, okay.
Because I do want to get to that, it's an important piece for St. Mary's and actually the entire Camden County community. We've had some heartburn with the PSA, with the Public Service Authority who manages our recreation departments and, and some other things, leisure services in our county. There's, you were very vocal about the disappointment and the mismanagement of the PSA. And you were probably more, in my opinion, more than anybody on council, you, Mr. Nutter. You're very vocal about the mismanagement of that and how things should look in, in, in going forward. There's a few questions I have about this, but I want to get to one of the points that you made in a city council meeting. You said that, you know, the council members in each municipality should be more involved. Can you explain what you mean by that? How do you want this to look going forward?
Well, moving forward, it's, we need to learn from our mistake, obviously. And there needs to be more oversight. When the PSA was formed, it probably seemed very logical, place each one of the mayors on there. And two from the counties since they're representing a larger number of citizens. And that'll be the fair way to provide the oversight. The model may have been very effective initially. It may not be, the PSA's been in place a long time, it may not be the best model at this time. Because the mayors and the council and the commissioners get busy doing the day-to-day business of the cities and the counties. I'm not real familiar with the structure of how the service authority was designed. Because you have, you know, it's all state-regulated, all your authorities are. And I'm not sure of the amount of flexibility they have in actually changing their bylaws and their articles of incorporation. But minimally, if nothing else, I think, learning from this experience. It would be good to have at least committees, one or two committees reporting to the board of directors. That oversee certain aspects. For example, perhaps a financial committee who could take the time to look at it. Get the right folks on there and understand the finances and, I mean, perhaps another one for the programming. I don't think there, it's a citizen-driven, it's a citizen service. And it may be beneficial to have citizen representation. As long as, and it's the same thing going with all my boards and authorities. Having, can I go, let me go back to block one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Going back to block one, I'm a firm believer that in order to be effective, you have to have all components of the business, or in our case, the city, operating effectively, efficiently together. We're made up of three components. We have our employees, we have our elected officials, and we have our citizen appointees. Boards and authorities were set up because council on its own did not have enough time to do everything that needed to be done in the city. So the whole concept between boards and authorities was established that way. And I'd like, I, if I have my way and I'll continue working for this. I want the impression of those folks who are there to be elevated to the level it deserves to be elevated. They are servicing the citizens of the community in a different way. But equally to what employees and elected officials are doing. I'd like to, you know, they make a commitment that they will act on behalf of the citizens. They're not just volunteers who pop into a meeting and stay an hour, they actually are representing the city. And for us to be as effective as possible, we have to be working and understanding how all the pieces fit together. And be on the same page and same, be taking the same direction and trying to accomplish the same goals. And that's what I see also valuable in the master plan. If we can, if we can get everyone on the same page. And I know there's been a lot of controversy between the hospital authority and the city. We're, we're not on the same page there, we're both saying.
What is it going to do, what is it going to do to get the hospital authority and the city on the same?
I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure because there's strong personalities and strong feelings. But if everyone could put aside personal feelings and think about who we're trying to service. We're trying to service the seniors of our community in the best way we can. And from the city's point of view, and Jeremy, you and I have talked about this in the past. We have to make sure our funds are being used efficiently and effectively. We are the city, not just the authority, but we are putting out a lot of funds for that senior center in the way of salaries and benefits. Having only twenty folks show up, that's not making the most of, taking advantage of, of the dollar amount. We're not servicing at a level that I or a lot of other people are comfortable with. We should be servicing at a much higher level, there's so much need out there.
Do you think the current spending formula that the hospital authority has governed for themselves is an effective way to do what's needed to service a wider range of senior citizens in St. Mary's?
You know, I, I've, I've gone back to the decision that was made at the last time it was taken to court. And everything I read says that the authority funds that is generated in interest, because they're not touching the principal, should be used to service the, service the senior center. They're using funds in other ways that are not bad, like food pantries and all of that. But I'm not sure how compliant they are with the decision, the court decision that was made because of the way it's worded.
Well, you bring it up, yeah.
All of those services that they are providing outside of the senior center could be coordinated through an active functioning senior center.
Well, because they haven't had consistent audits, the city manager is essentially asking them to justify every expenditure because they're, because he, he has to have that for the Department of Community Affairs. Currently, there's, there's a little bit of a dispute about, you know, should we have to go through, this hospital authority is saying, should we have to go through the city to make these expenditures, we've never done it before? Well, that's because they've never had an audit before. Well, they've had one in two thousand twelve after somebody took them to court. And then now they're, they're going to do two years of audits, worth of audits, which really they should go all the way back to two thousand twelve. Based on what the consent lawyer says. But, but for whatever reason, they're only doing two years of audits and those audits should be completed sometime this fall. So I guess my question to you is, you know, what is it going to take to get that synergy between the city and the hospital operations? Is it going to take another declaratory judgment from a judge to say, this is how we do it? I mean, what is it going to take?
And, well, and there, there are a lot of. And, well, and there, there are a lot of good people on that. But throughout all the boards and authorities, sometimes, and this is part of the stud- like, the study I did, we're not having enough turnover.
Okay.
You, you need to bring in fresh ideas and, and new ideas and new energies to any entity to make it function well.
Why do you think that's the case? Why do you think that, that's an, it is an issue, not just for the hospital authority?
No.
But it's for all of our community boards in St. Mary's?
I think it's because if the same folks stay on it long enough, it starts to become theirs. And they start to, it be, it starts to become territorial. This is my territory, this is my job, and I'm going to do it the way I want to do it, rather than looking at the whole picture. It's like, when I did the study, it was like everyone was working in their own silo and maybe protective about the fringes of their responsibility to some degree, instead of seeing it as part of the big picture and how they're contributing to the big picture. We're not there yet, we're solely trying to work our way there. Uh, we've had a major change on the Orange Hall. Um, we've now gone from a foundation to a management, uh, uh, citizen-driven management committee, Orange Hall Management Committee. We're working very closely with the city. Both the city and the citizens are sitting at the same table at the meeting, talking about the same issues and finding ways to cooperate to move forward.
I'm just going to ask the question, are we going to lose Orange Hall?
No.
Okay.
We are taking the steps now to make sure that does not happen. We're right in the process of launching a website through the city website on Orange Hall and we have posted a lot of the photos that we've used for grants showing the repairs that have to be done. And hopefully it'll be able to be linked soon and if folks can go there and look at them and actually see it, because each photo, because it was needed for the grant, has a description of what's, the photo is showing and the repair that needs to be done.
Now, this is a ten thousand dollar grant or is it bigger?
No, that was a ten thousand. But, but we have all the photos, so we've loaded them on the website so that when it's live, the citizens can go on there and see the work that needs to be done. We're doing some final adjustments to the engineering studies so that we can go out to bid. We're looking at a few add-ons in case we can afford it and that would be to get the outside functional so we can use it once again for weddings. What if we repaired the brickwork? Make sure all the railings are ADA compliant, making sure the porches are usable. Um, and then slowly progressing with the repairs needed to open the facility totally back up again. This is all about getting it structurally sound. Right now, the engineer has come back and said, we're finding some more problems with the pillars. Um, he's, the engineer is doing additional studies to see if it might be, he's found a place that will replicate the pillars rather than repairing the current pillars to see what the cost advantage would be to doing it either way. And then possibly going out for bids either way, repairing the pillars. Because the pillars are in a more important part of the structure than what we realized. So you have to have those pillars structurally sound. So we were hoping to have started construction already, but hmm, probably not before the beginning of the year by the time we get the engineering study done and the, um, bid process going.
Okay. Last topic, uh, fair representation in the city. There's, since the zoning and proposed issues to come up, there's been a discussion about why we should move away from at-large districts and go, uh, go to district voting. There, the people who are, who's supportive of that are saying that there's becoming more specific pockets of need, greater need within the city as the city grows. And so they believe that the current council, the way that we elect our council, uh, members is no longer probably an effective way to represent the city. Do you think that that is, there's some, some, some good insight to that? Or is that, is the current voting system a fair representation of the city electorate?
There are advantages and disadvantages to both approaches. Uh, of course, I'm at large and I have tried to treat my position as at large. In fact, that's another thing, I'm glad you brought that up because I can fit something else I want to talk in and that's the concept of One St. Mary's. That's the theme of the master plan, One St. Mary's. And it's more than just a slogan. It's that we're a population of seventeen thousand. My concern with splitting into districts is that person representing that district is only going to be looking out for, getting as much as they can for that district. So you have a bunch of folks all trying to get something for their district instead of looking at the whole picture and saying, where is the need the greatest? And how can we even out our work to make sure everyone is serviced to the, at the level they need? So I, myself, I prefer being at large because I have an opportunity to go in all the various areas of the community. In fact, I was at the Pines a little bit before I came out here. They were having a, a little cookout to encourage people to register for voting. And I like the fact that I can go into all these communities and say, I represent you. What are your thoughts? So I, I, when it comes to what districts are not districts, that really is a decision of the citizens on how they want the city to operate. There's advantages and disadvantages to both approaches, positives and negatives, and, um, you have to balance out what's best for the, for the whole generally. I prefer, I think what we need to do is more community outreach. I've tried to do that a lot. Um, I had a group that met during the master plan is, plan process called Every Voice Matters, where we got the African-American community together. That resulted in the transportation project. Unfortunately, it didn't go anyplace, but it opened doors, it opened conversations. And there's communities, when I was working on the master plan, there are communities such as the Pines who felt invisible to the city. They felt that the rest of the city didn't even want to admit that they existed within their city. And they had a desire to be accepted as fallen citizens. So that, you know, that's one of the things I struggle with when it comes to districts. We don't want more pockets. We want more acceptance and more understanding of the whole picture. And trying to encourage, because we're stronger as a one community. If we can get on the same page and work hard together than we are if we're split up. And, and every area needs, uh, work. Every area has a little different priority. We just need to get out there better and, and I wish more folks came to the city council meetings. And you posting them helps at least them able to see them. And we've been trying to improve our audio visual, not perfect yet, but we've been trying, working on that. But there's a lot of folks who are uncomfortable coming and uncomfortable getting up and expressing their opinions. They're more comfortable talking one-on-one. And the fact that they can pick one out of six that they're comfortable with is a good thing. Because they can go up to any one of the six of us if they're comfortable with them, if they go to the same church or, you know, they know them from the neighborhood or whatever, to talk to them. Because of a lot of communications go on in grocery stores and churches and after church and in the park and, you know, you get a lot of feedback that way.
Well, we've talked about a lot of issues and I'm, I'm glad we had this discussion because this really gives us insight into how the candidates really tackle the issues and how they want to tackle the issues versus seeing something in print for just a few paragraphs.
Yeah.
Because it really gives, it gives the voter an idea of, of, of how, how you want to attack the issues. And so I do appreciate that. If there's anything you want to say in closing?
Yes, I, I, I want to stress that council members on their own can't really accomplish anything. It's, it's a matter of working with the other council members and working with the community to try to find the right balance. Because a variety of opinions, uh, are great to have, you get better decisions, but it has to be done respectfully and with open minds and with allowing everyone to have their opinion and feel comfortable expressing it. That's the way you can find good decisions. And with council, it's, it's part teamwork. It's part relation, it's about relationships and teamwork and trying to honestly listen to each other and find solutions. No one person can solve all the problems.
That's true.
You have, you have, somehow, if your, if your idea is brilliant, you still have to sell it to five other people. Even if you think your idea is brilliant, it may, no one else may think it. But, but it's a, it's a matter of compromising. It's a matter of, unfortunately, right now, outside of our area, things are so polarized, they're not functioning well. But to be functioning, you really need that cooperation, that willingness to listen and, and of course, I encourage everyone to get out there and vote.
Absolutely. I do appreciate it. Thank you for taking time out of your day to, to do this. Um, wow, we, we-